Call the court to order, and I'd like his knee here. Hey Jimmy, would you like to do the invocation for us?
Let's pray. Lord, we come before you, Lord, we ask that you help this court to make the decisions that's best for this county. Watch over all the people in his county, Lord, protect them, guide them. Like I said, guide this court, Lord, that they make the decisions for this county. Ask it in your sweet name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Present.
Commissioner Atkins.
Present.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Present.
We have a court, and we are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Dr. Jeffrey Sick if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America. The Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong as our own.
Thank you, sir. We do have some special guests here today. We have Dr. Jeffrey Sick, who is a Johns Creek native. Dr. Sick, would you like to come up to the podium and just introduce yourself? And I believe he has a PhD in political science, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
And from the University of Virginia?
And I was recently hired as a professor of political science at the University of Pikeville, and I've invited some of my students, the only one took me up on the offer, to come here today for bonus points to learn more about how county government works. So, thank you for having us.
Absolutely. As a political science major, University of Virginia has always been one of the top schools. I guess Dr. Savado is at the University of...
He is, yes, yeah.
So, great school, and U-Pike's lucky to have someone with your credentials. And as you know, my wife's from the same creek you are.
Yeah.
Not too many people with PhDs from Burnin' Fork, so... But welcome, and your students are always welcome, and we'd love to have your students come down anytime, and they have questions, we'd be happy to try to answer those for them as well.
Wonderful, thank you so much, sir.
Thanks, sir. All right, the next item is the approval of the minutes from the September 19, 2023 meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court. Is there a meeting or a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn, any question or discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. The next item is the continuity of government ordinance, and it's styled ordinance. I'm not sure, Roy, if this is actually an ordinance, but it's under KRS 67.725. In the event that there was a vacancy in the judge executive's office, or I'm out of town, or there's some type of disability, this allows the deputy judge executive to act in my place, and it's one of the reasons that you really need a deputy judge executive. So, is there a motion to adopt the continuity of government document, including Deputy Judge Executive William Spears, in my absence to exercise the functions of judge executive?
I make motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn, any question or discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes, and Roy, could you just make sure that we don't have to have two readings of that and publish it? I don't think we do. It's styled ordinance on the document, but I'm not sure it's an ordinance under the... Okay. So, we can clean that up and take the ordinance off of it, but just get with Roy and make sure that the format is correct on the style. It's a court order, it's not an ordinance. So, all right, next item is presentation by the Pike County Clean Community Board, and we have Mr. Robert Helby, Mr. Ishmael Ratliff, and Mr. Marvin Thacker here. Gentlemen, would you all come on up? And while they're making their way up, let me just thank the... Thank these gentlemen, because they're tireless advocates for cleaning up Pike County. We have done a lot to try to develop adventure tourism in the county. As you know, we had the ribbon cutting on the trail system. I've always believed for us to take advantage of our opportunity to develop tourism, you have to clean the county up. And unfortunately, we still have a lot of people who want to throw garbage out, litter, illegal dumps. And when I came in as county judge, the county didn't even have a solid waste enforcement officer. We have two now. We've been very aggressive on the enforcement side, but I want to thank you and your volunteers, because you've been very aggressive on the cleanup side. And one of the things I do want to do is probably at the next court meeting, if you need to put this on the agenda, is to discuss a small appropriation for Pike County Pride or the Clean Community Board. I'm not sure how we're going to call that, or if it's going to keep going. By Pride was the personal responsibility in a desirable environment that was started by Congressman Rogers. Federal funding's dried up for that program, and I'm not sure what acronym you're still using, or what name, but I would like to see a small amount of money appropriated to help you with your efforts, and also the friends of Tug Fork. You know, what, Robert, what you've worked, you told us about with the tire cleanup, they've pulled over 5,000 tires out of the Tug Fork, and it's just remarkable how bad the problem is. There's thousands of tires in the Levisa Fork that need to be removed, and we're just now getting started on that. But we do need to put some money into those programs to help make them, you know, make sure that they're sustainable. We do have some students from U-Pike here, you may have some volunteers if you get with Dr. Sick back there. He might be able to help arrange some extra credit activities for a community cleanup event or something along those lines. But, gentlemen, you all have the floor.
Well, Judge, first of all, we'd like to say we want to thank the fiscal court as a whole. You all have been instrumental in helping us in every request that we've come before you with, and the commissioners have showed up at our cleanups and showed support. So, we do want to give a thanks to everybody in this county that's helped us. It means a lot to us. And again, we would like to thank you so much for considering giving us, you know, an annual budget to help us to continue to grow throughout the county. At this point, you know, we've been operating off what we could generate through donations, and so obviously, we've been purchasing, you know, supplies and food to support the workers and refreshments, and anything we can to help, you know, the cleanup effort. So, again, we would like to say thank you all, because it is greatly appreciated. And I can't give enough thanks to Robert and Marvin. I mean, they're super instrumental in this and work diligently to see that this all comes together. So, at this time, I'd like to yield my time over to Robert and...
Thank you, Judge, and thank you, Pike County Fiscal Court, for allowing us this opportunity. I summed up what expenditures we've had for the 2023 season, and without the purchase of the trailer, and that's one thing that we did use most of our, well, not most of our, a large portion of our money. We purchased a trailer, a dual axle trailer. It was $4,500, I believe. But we also gained some monies from, the city of Pikeville has donated $1,000, CoRun donated $1,000, $200 from US Bank, and then the Pike County Health Department donated $500 for the fish trap cleanup event. But we come into this program, this organization with a good budget. Jimmy Dale Sanders, when he left and that group, they left us financially in good standing, really good standing. So, we had the opportunity to invest in the trailer, to try to organize what we do, and to be able to do these cleanup events and have all of our equipment on site during a cleanup event. So, with as large a county as we have here in Pike County, we thought that was a great necessity. But we have a lot of ambitions going forward, and I think any organization that anybody puts any time and effort in should be like that. We'd like to see us working, I'd like to see us working with the Brakes Interstate Park to work on our Kentucky side of our brakes, well, overlooks and scenic views that we have here in Kentucky, and with the county park system as well. And to try to promote the community to get involved in what we do. And we have a lot of ambition, working with the school system, educating our youth with regard to environmental stewardship, recycling, and keeping our community clean. Partnerships was made this year with Kentucky Division of Water, Kentucky Division of Waste Management with regard to the tire cleanup, and that's an ongoing project. We collected 410 tires, I believe, this year, and we just scratched the surface. We picked up an area that was about 75 yards long along the strip bed, so we're going to continue with that. And U-Pike has been instrumental in that regard with their volunteers, with their freshmen and their community work that they require out of their freshman students. They was instrumental in getting that started this year, so... But we do, like everybody else, we do spend money. We have quite a few supporters, and that's something we're going to try to rally this year as well, try to find people who's interested in putting financial obligations into what we do as an organization. But we, yeah, we would like to, Pike County Fiscal Court, to kind of help promote us to, not financially and publicly. That's all.
And I don't want to forget something that's very important, the inmates has worked diligently to help us. They've been at every major cleanup that we've asked them to be at, so a big thanks goes out. Right, yeah.
I think that we do need to recognize Eric Jailer and the jail staff, Jason Fields, they've been absolutely spot on in making sure that we've got staff to help with these cleanups. They did the same thing with the Friends of Tug Fork cleanup a while back, so...
Basically, Judge, they've been the backbone of a lot of this help, so, and that goes really greatly appreciated. So, I want to thank the jailer and all the staff.
Let me ask, this is, you know, I've got my opinions, but you all are out in the community, you're working on cleanup. What, Marvin, what do you all think we need to be focused on? Or rephrase it, what should... Where should we concentrate our efforts in terms of cleaning up Pike County?
Well, Judge, you know, as, you know, the board, they all left me and left me here, and then Teddy Honaker took me over and put the account in my name. But now, these hollers needs to be cleaned up, people overlook them, but now they get in a mess. I've got, I'm going to do mine on 21st this month, and if you go from year to year, it is pitiful. You know, the creeks and the bar, and the road and stuff, people, we can clean it up on a Saturday and a Sunday, as you go out to church, they despise us, they throw it right back out in the middle of the road. But these hollers and along the side of the highways, the inmates doing a real good job on that, because they throw it down, I mean, they pick it up, and weeks later, it's right back in the same shape.
You know, we had the jail come up where I live, two weeks later, you couldn't tell it, I mean, they picked bag after bag of garbage up, two weeks later. I'm not sure if we're missing the education component in our schools or in early childhood development, because I remember growing up, and I've said this, the commercials that had the, that were on television showed the Indian on the horse, you know, looking at the litter. And that sort of stuck in my mind, I still remember that after all these years, and I just don't know what makes people think it's okay to roll the window down, throw garbage out. Our solid waste guys catch them routinely. We post the videos when we catch people on the Pike County Solid Waste Facebook page. There obviously is an enforcement component. I'm just not sure that, I'm not sure the education component's there, because obviously, the folks who are doing this could care less about their community, they could care less about their neighbors. I'm not sure how you get through to these people other than putting them in jail for a while.
I think our demographics has changed so much over the 30, 40 years, and obviously, the mentality has changed for multiple reasons. But I think, we talked about this numerous of times, if we can get an invitation into the grade schools and be able to present to the grade schools, we could start there. And actually, Pike Central, they helped us last year on a cleanup, so if we can get back into the schools and getting the students involved, I think that's going to make a big difference. And also, if I may add, not to take up the court's time, but with, you know, the commissioners and anybody you all know that would be key people in our districts that would be interested in helping, because this county is so big, you know, it's pretty tough for us to reach everybody, but as you go out through your district, if you have any key people that would be interested or instrumental in helping us, that would be greatly appreciated.
I'll be the first one to say, at times, it feels like cleaning up the counties an uphill fight. And, you know, even though we talk about the importance of our solid waste system and our landfill, I still hate to say this, there's a significant number of people that just think it's okay to throw it out.
The mentality thing.
And, you know, and it's not just household waste anymore either, it's, a couple of years ago, we were weed eating in my side of the road, and there was a needle. You know, I've got my son out there, and we're trying to, you know, do some yard work, and there's a needle that had just been thrown out. So, you know, a few years ago, it was a shake and bake meth, you had to be careful if you picked a bottle up, a plastic bottle that could be, you know, that could be where they had made meth. Obviously, they've moved on to other forms of making it now, but, you know, this problem is going to be here long after I'm out of this office. You know, we've had people like Marie Childers and Teddy Honaker and others, Jimmy Dale Sanders, who've worked hard on this issue. And as much progress as we've made, there's still times that feel like, you know, it's just swimming upstream.
It seems like the post-pandemic era that we're in, it's trying to get everybody back motivated again. Pre-pandemic, wow, you know, everybody seemed to be more energized, and we're trying to get back to where we used to be, and it's just going to take an effort to get out and get our key people fired back up to get going again.
Well, I'm going to put it on the agenda, and these gentlemen can, you can ask them about what their thoughts are, if they're supportive of it. You know, we've got the county in pretty good financial shape, and it would seem to me that it would be, we're spending money on tourism. It doesn't make sense to do that and not spend money on trying to clean the county up, because I don't think that you can separate one from the other. People are not going to come here, and they're not going to come to the Brakes, they're not going to come to, you know, whitewater rafting this month, they're not going to go to the hillbilly trail system, they're not going to do those things, they're not going to come to Pine Mountain if all they see is garbage when they get here, litter. And I think it's a bad image for the people of eastern Kentucky to see the kind of littering and dumping and the kind of garbage. Every time, you know, this last flood event we had, I had a deep freeze wash up in the drain at my house, a deep freeze. Only way it got there is if somebody threw it or had it out close to the creek or threw it in. And so, I do thank all of you for what you've done, and we're going to try to make sure you've got the help that you need to do your, what you're setting out to do. Go ahead, maybe.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. I want to thank you all for what you're doing. I mean, I'd love to see Pike County cleaned up, and, you know, like, anything I can do, I'll help. I mean, you know, I come up to the tire cleanup once, well, twice, and it's like I went in that little holler while I lived, over my experience over Johns Creek. I can tell when a stranger comes up that holler. You know how? They'll throw something out. And you know what I do? I start and pick it up. And that hollow is probably one of the cleanest places in Pike County. Not only I do it, everybody in the hollow does it, and that's how we keep it clean up in there. But I do appreciate everything you all can do, you know what I mean? I'm sure the court will help you. I know, I'm in favor of it, you know, and I think I can talk probably maybe for these other two commissioners, I know they want the county cleaned up, too. And Judge, probably.
Yeah, I want commendations, too, and I'm probably as proud or more proud than every one of the other two, because all three of you is from my district. I'm very proud of you, and you all do a good job, and it means a lot, you all helping them. We'll help you, on my side, I'll help you, I can.
We're looking, and the state's looking as well, with regard to funding. One thing that the Friends of the Tug Fork kind of have over us is they got West Virginia DEP, they got Watercraft and stuff like that that kind of helps them along the way. We're hoping that Kentucky will get on board with what's going on in West Virginia and adopt that same thing into Kentucky, and that's what, that's what we've been looking forward to do and looking forward to them providing us.
I want to touch on that just briefly. It seems like in Kentucky, sometimes we get behind the curve. When the Hattville McCoy Trail System started, the state got behind it, they put the money into it and made it happen. When they started cleaning up the Tug Fork, the state got behind it in West Virginia, and that's the only reason they've been able to do what they've done. We have a couple companies here that are trying to take advantage of the bourbon boom, for lack of a better term, that we've seen bring a lot of jobs and growth to the central Kentucky counties where, you know, you've had distilleries. You've got a distillery, I think it's at Forest Hills, Polly Hollow, I think there's a precinct election over there. You have Dueling Barrels here in town, and you have another one that they're looking to build over, the Wright Brothers are looking to build over at A-Flex. You know, those distilleries, whether you consume bourbon or not, or distill spirits, there are jobs that have been created across Kentucky. We have local businesses that are trying to do the same thing here. But again, without cleaning up our environment and making it a desirable place for people to come to, you know, the Kentucky Bourbon Trail has created just massive amounts of tourism. We're never going to be able to take part in that if we don't clean up our community. It's, you know, we have litter baiting crews out every day. Fabian, you have something you... What is this, Fabian? Is that...
That's on county road.
Where is that? I mean, it's, if you saw this picture, it would be mind-boggling about how much, you know, and we just have to...
Judge, one of my clients came in from out of, he's with a major company that I work for, and the first thing, he came in out of Salt Lake, he's over all the environmental of this major company, and I took him around to some of the projects I work on, and the first thing he wanted to do was go to the McCoy Cemeteries before he went back home. So, I took him up there, and so, that seems to be the, what everybody wants to talk about, you know, about the Hattville McCoy feud, and then go to the cemetery and go, so tourism is important to this county.
Fabian, do you know if that, if that picture has been sent to solid waste enforcement? It's amazing. Still an uphill battle, I mean, we just keep, we just keep, the picture Fabian just sent me is just not acceptable. And maybe Christie will get a copy of that to you and let you take a look at it and see. Fabian, can you give that to, Fabian, can you give that to Christie from the News Express, that picture, just show that to her, maybe you want to share that with her? Maybe it's something the newspaper would want to go out and take a look at. People who are doing that need to be held accountable, there's no excuse for this, and I'll show it to you gentlemen, too, when you, when you get a break here. But again, thank you, and we'll try to put this on the agenda at the, at the next meeting to see what we can do.
Thank you all, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is approval for the county judge to execute a notification of intent to finance and application of debt approval for the Pike County landfill. This is necessary for us to do the bond issue for the landfill expansion. The document is going to say not to exceed $12 million for a 30-year term. As you all recall, in the last court meeting, I had indicated that I had hoped that we could pay that down and not, A, not have to spend that much, but also that we could pay a substantial amount down and not stick the county with that kind of debt going forward. Chuck, can you come up for a second just to the table? We don't have Larry here, the landfill manager, but can you give us an update just on where we are with regard to the landfill right now in terms of capacity?
Really hard to say. I can tell you this, it's getting close. I know we put 58,000 tons in it last year, and it's looking like we got about, you know, that was back in April, two years from April. So, we're less than two years now is where we're at.
And what people don't realize is, once we get the technical application approved, get the design, you know, the design's going to have to have some modifications as we go forward, get the funding in place, it's going to take a while to build this.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be, William, would you agree, you know more about the permitting side of this than most people, but would you agree that we're going to be really close about whether we can get the expansion?
We're going to be really... Save some time.
And that's what I had talked to Colonel Downey about, is to get with Frankie Stacey and Greg Fannin about this. Thank you very much. All righty. So, is there a motion to approve the execution of the notification of intent to finance and application of debt approval?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blackburn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins, any question or discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is approval to execute contract with Coalfields Auction for surplus equipment auction and authorization for payment. Come on up, and let's have a conversation about this. Clayton knew this was coming. So, Clayton, why don't you explain to these gentlemen why we should give you 8.75% of the auction?
Out of kindness of your heart. I've been doing this auction for, I guess, about, I don't know, close to eight years now. Frankie, Mr. Stacey, treasure knows, our last auction was about $400,000. You're welcome. I think, I think our auction before that was, I don't know, roughly about $130,000, $180,000. But what we've seen, the last time we did this auction, was COVID just had, got done with, the mask mandate was, just had lifted, and we had a lot of good spirited men that had a lot of money that was reserving because they couldn't get out and buy anything, there wasn't no present physical auctions. And your older generation, they don't do the online thing, so if they can't be present, they ain't spending no money. But yeah, that's typically what we've been seeing over the past eight years, is mostly your participants in this auction's been age 50 and above and spend quite a bit of money with us. So, it's done pretty good, praise the Lord. I know when I first come into the scene, I promised Judge Deskins, I believe it was, I told him if I didn't make him $100,000, he didn't have to pay me a penny, and we ended up making $142,000. So, tickled to the salt of death, Lord tickled me to death, scared me to death, too, so I didn't think I was going to... I didn't think I was going to be paid.
So what, so what kind of guarantee are you going to make us then?
Guarantee, oh, no. Uh, I guarantee that I'll show up. Promise to God I'll show up.
I know, I know with my other job that, you know, we do contingent fee if we don't get, you know, those kind of deals. So we need to have a little, we need to restructure this a little bit.
Oh, no. Oh, well, Judge, I want to start off by saying happy birthday to you. I know you're in good spirits today.
Birthday was last week, but.
Do what now?
Birthday was last week, so.
Oh, last week. Oh, that gone.
Oh, he's good spirits.
I'm late. I'm late.
So if he offered him 100,000 or nothing, so if you don't get us 200,000, it goes 3%.
I ain't going to say not 200, but I, I will, I will tell you, we, we have, we've looked at the, we've looked at the, uh, uh, what's coming up for bids and comfortably, everybody has agreed for what's up there right now already. We can expect about a 185, 210,000 dollar auction this year. That's, that's where we feel comfortable at. Um, we do, and every year it grows. Uh, so when participants of the auction come up, they, we get, we get a, uh, we get a small information about who they are, how to contact them, and we've got phone numbers of collectively now around 850 different, uh, past participants of this auction. And we personally call each one of them that has spent money with us before. Uh, we don't waste our time, you know, calling people that haven't, but if you have spent money with us, expect a phone call on us, uh, or from us in the next week.
So essentially, uh, are these the same terms that we used last?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's just copy pasted basically.
So the auction is scheduled for Saturday, November 4th at 10:00 AM at the maintenance garage on Ford Mount, if anybody's listening. Uh, the terms will be an 8.75% um, auctioneer's commission of the total announced sale price, sale price plus we pay that $1,000 advertising fee. Anybody have any questions about this? Is it a motion to approve the contract with Coalfield Auctions as stated?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Judge, anytime you want to make a motion for it to be 10%, Lord, I greatly appreciate, appreciate that Judge.
You're pushing it. I was thinking 7%.
God bless you all. God bless this county. God bless this court. Uh, I want, uh, I want to tell you, the Lord's called me to be a preacher, and I've been exercising my, exercising my gift, and he's put it on my heart. Uh, I know people see this from home. Put it on my heart to tell everybody the Lord loves you. That's all I got to say.
Hey Clayton, is your business name 81 Auctions now?
Yeah, we changed it. Yeah, 81 Auctions. I'm going to take my seat over here.
Leave it to Roy to, to one-up you there Clayton. Roy, do we need to, do we need to amend, do we need to amend the name of that contract?
Yeah, because it's not Coalfield Auctions anymore.
All right, let me, okay, is there a motion to amend the, um, authorization that we previously voted on from Coalfield Auctions to 81auctions.com?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please. Second by me or Commissioner Blackburn, both of us. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is approval of a lease with utility resources for delivery and setup of voting machines and related equipment. Mr. Pew, is this something you were wanting to talk about?
Yeah, currently our, the contract with the court was with Don Bevins, and it was a sole proprietorship, and Mr. Bevins passed. His son Keith is utility resource. Uh, this contract is the same as, uh, was already signed by the fiscal court when, uh, Mr. Bevins passed his contract ended, I think. The only thing is we added, uh, section 11, which is, uh, basically agreement if, if, if for instance, the equipment doesn't get picked up in a satisfactory timeframe. It gives us a little leeway to take a little bit of money from, uh, utility resources and, and pay someone else to bring it in. I don't foresee that happening this time. It's just something we, the election board wanted to put in there just in case, uh, we didn't get it in a timely manner.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the lease with utility resources for delivery and setup of voting machines and related equipment?
Motion.
By Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is adoption of a resolution authorizing the county judge executive to execute an emergency management hazard mitigation grant program, application in the amount of $1,469,800 for the Jerry Bottom Acquisition and Demolition Project. Uh, Jimmy, can you and Eric come up and introduce yourself and explain this to us?
Judge, this is a grant that we wrote to, uh, due to flooding, uh, I think it was June or July of the last year, '22, and people called in wanting some, tried to get some help, and we wrote this grant.
I guess it's got 11, 11 structures, Judge, and it is acquisition, demolition, like you've done in the past, and then the property, once you've acquired it, will remain as green space.
We think that, is the money going to be there for this hazard mitigation grant?
Yes.
Talked about.
Yeah, this is a, they've, they've requested a full application on this.
And we, uh, the county, county don't have no part in it.
How many, how many structures will this?
Jerry Bottom, this one has, uh, 11.
And, you know, they had significant flooding over there. Just the whole area is prone to flooding. So, um, all right, so is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county judge executive execute an emergency management hazard mitigation grant program, application in the amount of $1,469,800 for the Jerry Bottom Acquisition and Demolition Project?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Next item is, um, adoption of resolution authorizing the judge executive execute a hazard mitigation grant program application in the amount of $1,37,180 for the Belfry Main Street Acquisition and Demolition. Same thing. How many, how many, uh, structures in this?
Well, the application's got eight.
Is there a motion to approve, uh, to adopt the resolution authorizing the filing of the, uh, hazard mitigation grant stated amount?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Judge Jim, them all that flooding was at the same time, and we split these up because we was afraid they wouldn't get approved.
Thank you all. Good job. Next item is the first reading proposed ordinance regulating, regulating the use of permits on the hillbilly trail system. Colonel Downey, can you please present the first reading? Just for our students here, uh, this is the first reading. It takes two readings of an ordinance after. The second reading would be the, uh, when it would be acted upon finally after, uh, it's published, uh, in conjunction with Kentucky law. So Colonel, please proceed.
Judge, as you're aware, we have opened the ATV hillbilly trails. Uh, one of the things that I was asked at a meeting not too long ago is if somebody's up there and they haven't got the permit, so we're going to make a rule about that. And that's what our ordinance is concerning. Now therefore, be it ordained by the fiscal court, Pike County, Kentucky, that any operator on the hillbilly trail shall be required to have a permit issued by hillbilly trails to use the trail. Any operator not possessing the permit shall be fined $250 in court costs. Law enforcement will cite the offender to the Pike County District Court, Pikeville, Kentucky. First reading.
Comments on it? I, I want to just touch briefly on this. You have people that were making comments like, you know, why should we have to pay for riding trails we've always rode? Well, first of all, if you don't own the property, it's trespassing. Nobody's got a right to ride on somebody else's property, even though it's, you know, people call it outlaw trails or outlaw riding or whatever you want to call it. You know, we're not making anybody come to hillbilly trail system. Don't want to come. Nobody can make you come, but if you choose to come, you do have to get a permit and comply with the, the rules of the trail system. We don't want anybody to get hurt. Don't want children to be hurt. Um, we don't want people, you know, drinking and driving on the trail system. Uh, it, we want it to be a fun, family atmosphere where people can enjoy it safely. And that's the reason it's going to be patrolled. If you don't want to comply and you want to, you know, don't want to pay a $10 fee if you live in the county, and, you know, by all means, you're free to ride somewhere else. But we think that this trail system has a lot of potential. What we don't want is, you know, people who support the trail that pay the, uh, permit, whether they're in state, a neighboring, or in the county, neighboring county, or they're out of state. Uh, we, we want people to comply with the law because it, you know, it's taxpayer money that's funded the construction of the trail. It's going to take money to operate it. Uh, it may never pay for itself, but it has the potential to spur a lot of economic activity here in the county, which will benefit everyone, whether you ride ATVs or side by sides or not. So, uh, I think it's reasonable because if you get caught trespassing on somebody's property, uh, the fine is potentially higher than that. So uh, this will be on the agenda, not at the next court meeting, but the court meeting after that because we probably won't have time to advertise it. All right. Next item is the authorization to do an ad campaign for the hillbilly trails. I've got a proposal, uh, from the News Express. I'm waiting on additional proposal. What my thoughts are is we do need to spend a small amount of money, not to advertise it outside of the region, but just to try to let people here in the region know it's open so we can get people on the trails to start getting some permit sales. We've, we've, Jerry, do we have a number of how many permits we've already sold? Well, I mean, we've done no advertising. We've put a couple Facebook posts, and there's been one or two news stories about it. So I would not expect to see a lot of out of state interest in it because it's not, nobody knows about it. Um, so I would like to start locally because, you know, till we can get campgrounds built or we see private investment. I would like to see, uh, more advertising in the neighboring counties, uh, in Kentucky, West Virginia, in Virginia. Uh, maybe even over, you know, two or three counties away to where people who would not necessarily need places to stay, but would be driving in for the day, uh, to see, you know, if we can get interest. Like I said, a lot of people don't know about the trail system. We had some news stories in social media posts the day it opened, but, you know, since then, there's been no advertising. So I wouldn't expect it to do any different than a restaurant that opens up that nobody really knows is there, um, or a store, whatever it may be. So, um, hopefully we'll have both proposals, uh, before, uh, the next court meeting. So is it okay we pass over that one?
Yeah.
Next item is adoption of resolution authorizing the filing of a Kentucky, uh, Local Government Economic Development House Bill 1 grant application for $500,000 for bridge replacement, repair, and resurfacing, with authorization for the judge executive to execute any and all documents necessary, uh, by DLG to carry out the project and authorization by the, for the judge executive to act as the authorized correspondent or agent for the project. Sharon, we'll get the application filed. This is essentially to draw down half a million dollars for additional black topping, bridge repair, and so forth. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is authorization to execute the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Division Maintenance Agreement for services to be performed in conjunction with government agencies. What this does is if we run low on salt, we can buy up to 500 tons of salt from the state at $106.46 per ton with a $1.42 per ton handling fee and a one-time administrative fee of $97.15. We do this every year in case that our stock, uh, our stockpile of salt runs low and we're not caught, uh, without salt in the event of difficult weather event. Last year, Fabian, we didn't use very much salt, did we, except for that, uh, one, one cold spell, I guess was about the only time. Yeah, and they may or may not, if we have a bad enough winter, the state may not be able to, to meet this number, but it gives us that option. So.
I'll make a motion, Judge.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize the agreement as stated?
Yeah, motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Ben, you have anything, sir?
Uh, first of all, Judge, I'd like to, uh, clean up some old business. I think our last fiscal court meeting, this court approved a $3,800 expenditure to Mountain Comp for a canning program they were putting on for the needy. Uh, I've talked to them several times. We've decided the easiest way for, for us to do this, instead of us trying to buy these products and try to get them to them, is just write them a check and, and let them go ahead and buy it and, and hold their class. And I'd like to get authorization for the treasurer to write a check to Mountain Comp for $3,800 for this canning program.
Is there a motion to authorize, that's the canning program for low-income families that, um, we have agreed to provide materials for, uh, up to, I think it serves 100 families. Is that right, Greg? Is that what?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Want to abstain on that vote, please? All right, we agree.
The last year or so, we've been trying to do some work on some of our, uh, county parks that have been neglected for years. Um, we made a big push on the Hardy Park and did some, uh, rehab on their building over there, uh, in the first phase. We had some other things that, that we want to try to do over there in the spring. Uh, we have finished up some work in the, um, Freeburn Johnson Bottom Park, uh, you know, tore all the old concrete and hardtop out there and filled in with dirt and leveled and grass and straw, uh, planted, and, uh, we should have a lot of, a lot of green over there, uh, come springtime. We, we have a phase two over there also for next year that we hope to build a couple of picnic shelters and a basketball court. Uh, we have moved on to our Grapevine Park, which needing, some needing some attention. There is, um, it's used quite a bit over there. Uh, there's, there's two walking tracks, an inner small walking track and a large outer walking track. Uh, there's a basketball court. Uh, there's some trees that were planted there years ago that have got way too big for that park. They've got so big that the roots have grown out, grown out and busted up the hardtop and the walking tracks and the basketball court. Uh, we got a bid to, to, uh, cut all of, all 16 of those large trees. They'd be cut down and hauled off. Uh, there'd be a stump grinder brought in and. brought in and, and, uh, ground all the stumps up, uh, dirt and grass seed and straw put back in those places, um, around the basketball court and both walking tracks. Um, also there'll be a lot of, uh, hardtop that will need to be cut out that's hooved up because of the roots. Um, we'll go back in, level that up and, uh, tamp gravel in there to have it ready for hardtop. Also in the playground area, there's a lot of gravel exposed around the swings and that type of thing. And we're talking about bringing in a couple of truckloads of dirt and leveling all of that out and, and, uh, put grass and straw in there and hopefully it'll look like a completely different park, uh, by springtime. Uh, I've got a quote that I think is a very reasonable do all that work. Um, it's from Builderly Constructions for $17,500 be my recommendation. We award this to Builderly Construction for a total cost of $17,500.
Here's a question I had. In Roy, where we had done work with Builderly Construction on that other park, how much was it, Greg?
$23,000 in Freeburn.
Yeah. My question is, given the fact that this is another park reconstruction, uh, or renovation and repair, are, I mean, would we have to bid this out, Roy, if it's a separate park? I mean, I hate to say this, but the law is not real clear on that. And what's, what would your opinion be Frankie? Cause you're the one that deals with the auditors.
I was thinking that if you, if you had more than 30,000 in business in a fiscal year, or 40, that would still be over.
It puts us to 40.
You know, also he has done some of our illegal dump cleanups.
But those are bids separately.
Pardon?
Those dump cleanups are bids separately.
Yes.
So those wouldn't count toward that.
Yeah. Anything, anything that doesn't have a bid in a fiscal year.
Anything that doesn't have a bid. I mean, I don't know, I don't know the answer to it because if you read. Uh, that's, that's the problem. So Frankie, when the auditors come in, if they got questions, tell them to call Roy.
Or legal counsel.
I don't know. I mean, I think Roy. I, I. Well, it's a separate project. When they, when they, when they pulled that little game over the, the Phelps, uh, road lot and they issued it $19,000 increments and they spent four or $500,000. How much they spend on that bill, Frankie?
Over half a million.
Yeah, that, that should have probably triggered some people to, to pay some scrutiny to that, but it was the same project. Y'all know what I'm talking about. We, yeah, we changed our administrative code to comply with whatever Kentucky law is. So if it goes to 50, when, then ours automatically goes to 50.
Yeah, we took the dollar limit out.
What's that?
We took the dollar limit out of our administrative code.
He just made it conform with whatever Kentucky is. Okay. All right. Is, is there a motion to award this bid for 17.5 to Builderly Construction for the repairs and renovations at Grapevine Park?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Judge, a while back, we allocated a, a little bit of money to the Sheriff's Department. Uh, some of that money, we bought some rifles and optics they were needing. We bought some more vests they were needing and that kind of thing. This is a couple of other things that they're wanting to buy with that allocated money. Uh, they're wanting to buy some of, some more of the Toughbook tablets to go in some of their other, um, cruisers. Um, the six new cruisers that we just bought had all these in them. And these are some other, um, the same tablet to go in some of the existing cruisers they had. And this is be through, um, uh, L and W technology and, and they are on state contract. And the total for these would be $9,199.65. Yes. Yes. And the docking stations and the, and the things that go with them.
Authorization for a check.
An authorization for a check also.
All right. Is there a motion to award this bid to?
L and W.
Tech LLC DBA L and W Technology Solutions? Is that the right one?
Yes.
Yeah. For the sum of $9,199.65 in authorization. Treasurer to issue payment for the same.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Uh, also along those same lines, some other, another part of this money that's been allocated, uh, they're wanting to spend at Covert Video Solutions. This is some covert camera and accessories, uh, that will be used by the detectives. Uh, the total cost of this is $9,845 and it'd be purchased through, um, Covert Video Solutions.
Is there a motion to award covert, covert video solutions rated $9,845?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
That's all I have, Judge. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I do want to, I do want to, before we go on to the next item, I just want to mention something. We have Mr. Chet Hogston, who's a, a member of the Pike County Library Board. And I just want to say, Chet, uh, to you and the other members of the board, uh, thank you for your service, but also the News Express has reported that the rate, tax rate is going to be cut from 13.5 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value to 10.5 cents. Is that correct? So, um, you know, when we've made this push to give the fiscal court some control over who's appointed to the library board, you know, some people are saying, oh, they're going to hurt the libraries. Well, actually the libraries are sitting there with millions of dollars in the bank account that had really never been invested to, to maximize, uh, the full, uh, value of, of, of the interest potential. Uh, there's $2 million that have been invested. I understand, Chet, it's going to draw about a hundred thousand in interest a year, something that should have been done, uh, some time ago. Um, you know, my concern over the library system was never about the services or the books on the shelves. It was about whether the taxpayers were actually having a voice in the process. And, you know, those millions of dollars that were sitting there in the bank account, those was, those were dollars that were generated from the hardworking taxpayers of this county. Uh, and I didn't see the need for the, for the library system to have that kind of money just sitting there. Not when they have the option, if, if they have a shortfall to raise taxes every year by taking the compensating rate. And, uh, this is going to be a little bit more than a 20% tax cut by the library district on the property taxes of the people of this county. And that's what I was hoping that we could accomplish. And it, no services have been cut, right, Chet? No libraries have been closed. It really was just some accountability for the taxpayers. And this is what I had hoped that we would accomplish. And I want to thank the members of this court for supporting me in that effort. And I want to thank Senator Philip Wheeler. Um, you know, the folks of this county owe Senator Wheeler a debt of gratitude because when they get their tax bills this year and the property tax on the library portion of the bill goes down. We, no, it's, it's, it'll be on the next fiscal year. It'll go out, those tax bills will go out in, um, November, December, November, December. Yeah. So it'll be the tax bill that's coming up for this year. Um, so, um, that's a, that's a big deal. And I think, um, that Senator Wheeler and the, uh, members of the House delegation that supported this, the Herald Leader did a really, a hit piece on this really trying to impugn the integrity of why we were trying to do this. And I thought it was wrong. And they were misplaced. I wouldn't speak to them because I didn't think they would report the reasons for the story. But, you know, you had people saying, oh, they're going to ban books. No books have been banned. I support the First Amendment. My theory is if you don't want to read a book, don't check it out. Uh, second, uh, we have, um, a lot of money in the accounts at the library district, more than they need to operate it. You probably have a couple of years budget, uh, money to run it for a couple of years if you didn't take any money in, Chet. So, you know, I want to thank the, you know, uh, Greg May and Chairman Marvin Hensley and Chet and Carolyn Tackett. Um, uh, you know, we've got another member to be appointed as soon as we get it back from the, uh, state librarian. Um, and somebody that everybody here around the town knows, it's a lady that's, that's worked in the, with the public for a long time. And hopefully we'll get that back pretty soon. But I just wanted to mention that because, you know, uh, there was a lot of, you know, there was a lot of aspersions cast over the modus for what we were trying to do. But this is going to really help a lot of families right now, particularly with, uh, you know, uh, the economy, the way it is here. And I want to thank you, Chet, for, for your vote on that. I think you in fact made the motion to cut the tax rate. Okay. Well, thank you and Greg both. So.
But, uh, yeah, I'd like to speak a little bit on that there. Uh, I think that we need to give the people back something. You know, I called a little heat over at 911, about the second court meeting we come in, but, uh, I, I want to thank that library board for what they done, you know, and thank them to put that money somewhere where it'll make money, save the taxpayers money. You know, that's the way I look at it, you know? I mean, I think it's a good deal.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think for a lot of families, this tax cut by the library board will, you know, more than pay for the 911 fee and the garbage rate increase. I mean, there's things that are going to have to go up as we go forward. I mean, there's things that, that, you know, whether it's utilities, there's things that are going to have to be adjusted up because of the cost of providing the service. But there's no reason that the taxpayers should have their money just sitting there and not, or not doing anything for them. So, thank you all. All right. Road Supervisor's report. Mr. Little, anything, sir? Um, we have the road, uh, department work orders. Uh, anything that needs to be added or changed?
Nothing I seen.
I don't want to.
Is there a motion to approve the completed and scheduled work orders?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. We'll go into treasurer's business. Mr. Stacy.
Acknowledged receipt of the treasurer's monthly financial statement for September 2023.
Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's monthly financial statement for September 2023?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Authorize a check from the ARPA bank account to Mountain Water District in the amount of $18,845.99 and checks to Compass Municipal Advisors and Sturgill Turner Law Firm, uh, for grant admin fees in the amount of $282.68.
Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
By Commissioner Scott. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Authorize a pre-authorized credit in the amount of $102.37 for deposit books for the hillbilly trails, uh, bank account.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Approval of a request for payment, number eight, and authorization for a check to Elliott Contracting in the amount of $114,750.50 for construction on the Pikeville Senior Citizens Building. Uh, this is draw number eight and it's C D B G pass through money.
Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Authorize a check to Jones Contracting LLC in the amount of $84,073.35 for draw request number seven on Wolf Pit Industrial Site, and that's, uh, EDA grant money.
Motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Authorize checks to Jones Contracting LLC in the amount of $133,442.45 in Summit Engineering in the amount of $17,301 even for draw request number two on the Maynard Fork water line. And I think that's, uh, A R C money. And that's the final draw on that project.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blackburn. Who made it?
Blackburn.
Second by?
Second.
By Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Second.
Yes.
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 Authorize a check to Samantha Hatcher Smith P S C in the amount of $785,702.40 for four property acquisitions on FEMA DR 4595 Hazard Mitigation Grant, uh, for property at 721 Central Avenue in the amount of $362,894. For the property at 807 Central Avenue, uh, these are in South Williamson, $47,779.20 for, uh, the property at 723 Central Avenue, $163,814.40. And at 23 North Blackburn Bottom, $211,214.40. And like I said, that's a hazard mitigation grant and it'll take us about 30 days to get our money back.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Under additional treasurer's business, uh, there's a page in there telling the results from last month's, uh, Mack Truck Auction. And also, uh, the paper I handed out right as the court meeting started, I need a authorization for checks for lodging, registration expenses for any employee that needs to attend the House Bill Nine meeting at Morehead State University on October 17th.
What was that number again? What? What was the total profit on those trucks? William, show me some.
Total profit on the trucks from the sale of all 10 after the auctioneer fees, uh, $328,163.
We've got one more to go, right?
We've got two more to go.
Two more trucks to sell?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Can you get a motion on the, the training for next week?
Training?
It's, uh, to attend the House Bill Nine meeting at Morehead State University in Morehead, October 17th.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Questions, discussions, seen them? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Any other business, sir?
I'll have to.
Colonel, would you please instruct? We do have need for executive session. Would you please instruct the public in the court on the relevant provisions of Kentucky open meeting law relating to the entry into executive session?
Under Kentucky revised statute 61.810, the court is allowed to go into executive session under paragraph C to discuss proposed pending litigation and paragraph F to discuss specific personnel issues.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn. Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We're in recess. We'll call, return to the call later. All right, we're going to wind this up real quick. Is there a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. It is my motion to acknowledge moving Shannon Smallwood from contractor to full-time at the Trail System at 3H Rate of Pay effective 10/2/23, to move Larry Hensley from a 4A Rate of Pay to a 5A Rate of Pay as landfill manager effective 10/2/23, to acknowledge the hiring of John Austin Little as a heavy equipment operator for the road department special recruit at 6H Rate of Pay effective 10/9/23, to acknowledge the resignation of Reggie Hickman effective 10/1/23, to acknowledge the resignation of Curtis David Anderson as a solid weight loader effective 9/29/23, and to move Margaret Malice at 2H Rate of Pay to a 3H Rate of Pay Animal Control Officer effective 10/9/23 based upon her completion of her certificate of training in her passing the basic animal control officer certification course. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any questions, discussions, seen them? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. Anything from the department supervisors? All right. Anything from our, our new deputy judge executive for the first meeting? Anything from the county attorney's office? And Fishers, anything, Jim?
I don't have anything to do here.
No. Fisher Atkins, anything, sir?
Nah, Judge, I'm, I'm good. I just, everybody's done a good job, putting out a lot of hard work. It's, it's showing up. A lot of people's complimenting on the road department stuff, the work they're doing. That's it, Judge.
I just wanted to mention that Pike County, I've lost some good friends in the last few days. First of all, I want to mention the Paul Williamson's family. Paul's brother Danny passed away last week. It's why Paul's not here today. Also, a good friend, Dr. Ronnie McCoy, passed away. Diane's daughter was married to Ronnie's late son and Philip. And Ronnie was just a good friend, was my neighbor for a long time. And we also lost preacher Glenn Hall, a regular Baptist preacher that was a good friend. I saw that Glenn had passed away. And then the Phelps community lost Sid Lester. Sid was a longtime member of the fire department and ambulance driver. My dad had his heart attack in 2013. Sid is probably the reason my dad's alive. He did a lot for the community, great friend to many people, and he passed away. And we want to just extend our condolences to Sue and the rest of the family. So I thought I'd mention those folks and just remember their families in your prayers. And I guess if I didn't say that, or we...
Yeah, let's not forget Logan Hilleran, State Police. He got in a bad car wreck over him.
Logan's, I guess his fiancee's mother sent me a text that he has been, just while we were in the executive session, that Logan's been in surgery for eight hours today.
Yeah.
And is still in surgery. He's a good kid. I say kid, tonight he is a kid. Was in a horrible accident over at Phelps last week. And, you know, he's got a young baby girl.
Yeah.
And we want to ask everyone to remember Logan. I appreciate you mentioning that in, in the prayers. He was a, he's very fortunate to be alive from looking at the vehicle and from, from what his fiancee has told me. So, you know, we've had some very positive things happen in our community recently. We've had some, some very sad things. And we just want to remember the Hilleran family. He's a, he's a good, good young man, been a trooper for a couple of years and...
Pac Central graduate.
Pac Central graduate. And just hope and pray that he can fully recover. He's got some extensive lower extremity injuries, from what I understand. You know, we can't thank our law enforcement officers enough. We'll thank our law enforcement officers that responded to the, to the double homicide over at Belfry last week. I think that's one of the reasons that, you know, it's important our sheriff's office's equipment they need. We, we've had just a lot of tragedy here in our community in the last few days. And again, remember all those families that have been affected.
Judge, that Hilleran boy, they are a really good family. I, I watched that boy grow up. I know his dad, his grandpa. They're real good people, real good.
You know, and it's, you know, being in law enforcement's a dangerous job. He was out working. And like I said, we'll try to keep the family in our prayers. And if there's any changes, I'll try to give an update at the court next meeting. Thank you all for what you all do as well. Lee, would you come up? And there's no other business coming before the court before we entertain a motion to adjourn. I'd like to ask Nee Jackson to come up and say the benediction for us.
Shall we bow for prayer? Dear heavenly Father, Lord, what we come to you now, what we thank you so much for this day that you've given us, Lord? What we thank you so much for everyone that's represented here, all the families that are represented. What we ask that you continue to bless this court, dear Lord, and best bless the people in Pike County. What we pray that you be with those families that were mentioned, that have lost loved ones, dear Lord. What we just ask that you give them a special touch as only you can. What we ask, Lord, that you be with the Hilleran family, be with Logan, dear Lord, be with the doctors and nurses, the technicians, everyone that treats him, dear Lord, just steady their eyes and their hands, dear Lord, and that they're able to restore his health. What we just ask that you bless each and every one with traveling mercies, Lord, and return them back at the next appointed hour. What we just ask these things in your precious and holy name, and amen.
Amen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.